From the state, thirty thousand from marketing fund. It's in addition to the marketing, actually marketing line items we don't count. And then there's another thirty thousand that comes out of tourism tax.
I'm sorry, so say that again, Happy?
Now, the total amount for our marketing plan is ninety thousand dollars. We have sixty thousand in tourism grants, so that's, or we have thirty thousand tourism. Forty thousand in grants.
Yeah, with the, with the MPD and the NMG, yeah. Okay, I got you, yeah.
That's the eighty thousand tourism grant grants gives forty thousand that state, forty thousand is powers. A portion of it comes from, in this case, the Parks and the General Fund. Those have another sixty thousand that will be spending on marketing through our marketing plan. So there's thirty thousand that will come out of the marketing line item, thirty thousand that will go down the tourism tax marketing line. Then you've got, you've got the marketing, the Missouri matching grant, and you have the Missouri program grant. There's two different grants. One is for the actual marketing that we do outside of the fifty mile limit in newspaper, Facebook, and things that were recommended by McDaniel's. We're also going for rebranding, which is recommended by McDaniel's through marketing plan. Now, there's ten thousand, the state ten thousand from us that will go towards paying for that. So we've been, we'll have a recommendation coming your way, maybe in September, on what, what route to go with the marketing, with these rebranding.
Yeah, okay, now I've got the right sheet that everybody else has. And what I was talking about, um, so the landscaping came out, the software came out, but I would, I mean, I would really love for that software to be back in there. And that would be twenty-five hundred on eighty twelve. But then again, that's up to, it's up to the bov man behind me.
So Happy, on, on the full budget, it shows those two line items for, under the marketing plan. It shows those line items, uh, ten eighteen sixty fifteen and ten eighteen seventy-one sixty-three. Shows on here for the, um, but in the actual budget, it's quite a bit less. It shows, uh, thirty-three thousand, not the sixty thousand that's on the, oh.
You see thirty-three thousand, what are you referring?
Well, there's under.
Uh, sixty fifteen and seventy-one sixty-three.
Fifty fifteen, it's separate from the seventy-one sixty-nine.
Seventy-one, seventy-one.
Seventy-one seventy-three.
Yes, correct. There's two added together, but if you look at the full budget, it's, oh, uh. I'm not getting that here, I'm sorry.
For visit widgets? Oh, that doesn't leave me a lot of room, much. Cause in that whole thirty thou, thirty thousand of that forty-three is spoken for. So I basically have thirteen thousand dollars for the entire year to, to do any sort of marketing. And, yeah, it's not a lot. Anything separate from what, yeah, I say that, I mean, we can work within what McDaniel's is doing. Yeah, it's not really separate from what I'm working on, but. And if, if there're eighty-four hundred of that is going to visit widget, then it leaves me with forty-six hundred left for the year.
That's pretty shocking, I guess, um, to give you. I mean, you've got some proposed projects in there that I know it's not fair to say, but if, if that leaves you with less than five thousand dollars in any additional marketing or advertising.
Cue some thunder for the doom and gloom.
Well, um, I don't want to hold this up, but I, I'm gonna have to study that one a little bit more, um.
If you notice the bottom line for tourism is more of the most of the other departments. That's why we're gonna see less available in there.
Say that again, Happy?
So if you look at the bottom line of tourism on the, uh, the big spreadsheet, unless tourism has a larger budget than most of the other.
Uh, on, on the.
On the total, I mean, the total budget for, for that department. That's why you, you see some stuff that's not as, that you may not agree with, but definitely does the total budget for that department.
I'm not following you, Happy, I'm sorry.
So for legislative control for the budget for the year, it's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. For administration, it's three hundred and eight nine thousand. For the community, it's all the problems, a hundred and seventy-four thousand, five, it's a hundred and sixty-one thousand. For tourism, it's three hundred and twenty-three thousand. It's a pretty, it's a pretty large chunk of our, of the administrative.
Well, but it's also, um, one of the only departments that actually generates revenue back to the city in, in sales tax dollars. Uh, so I mean, to be fair, it's also got, how many, how many, you have two people down at the welcome center, plus yourself and Hannah. He's got four staff members, um, and he's still paying for his share of all the administrative fees, with, you know, printing and copying and phone services and all that stuff, so I mean, and then he's trying to market. So he has outgoing services that are not just, you know, when you look at the legislative, um, fund, there's not really capital outline projects that he's doing with, with, like, what he's doing with marketing, putting on a whole, whole advertising campaign. Because it's larger, I.
No, I think we're obligated to provide fire service and police service, and with that kind of sports service. I don't think we have an obligation to provide tourism service.
Correct, we, we do not.
I mean, and not to, not to downplay the, the department, but in, in a bonus budget crunch, I mean, we, we, we're obligated to provide certain services. And if we're talking about cutting a part-time police team or not programming all the radios to let the officers get out of the car and answer a call, then.
I think that got put back in.
I thought they, I mean, the last thing, first, five, you and five, I don't think.
That, that's what we talked about, let's. Yeah, we talked about zero initially, and then we were talking about five right now.
Either, I don't think it's, but we can discuss that last time, discuss that. And again, I'm not saying we shouldn't fund it or it's unreasonable, just food for thought.
Yeah, and I would say, in my biggest defense is that he's the only department that can generate revenue besides writing tickets. Uh, it's the only department that actually generates revenue for the city.
But it's, uh, it's also hard to quantify how much of that is directly related to the money we put into it. Spend three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars on it, so we want to get three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars back out, but we don't know.
Well, there, there are studies for that, you know, I mean, the state reports back that every dollar spent returns nine dollars in return for what you get back in, in.
Then our budget would be substantially bigger than it is.
Say that again?
Than our, our tax increase, our tax income would be substantially higher than it is.
Or just the opposite, if we didn't spend this money, this three hundred and some thousand in, in tourism, what would our, our, our revenue be, um, that we would, you know, take in?
Well, and also I think the department's, you know, been kind of dysfunctional for a little bit as well, so. You gotta factor that in, so.
Wasn't Happy in the previous part?
Not, not by choice. Wasn't his top, uh, choice.
Put the light in the mood in here a little bit.
Yeah, for sure.
I just caution the board that, uh, we, we, we have a somewhat functional, uh, tourism department now.
Yeah, no, I told, I wasn't saying I'm a, a cut above or anything, but, uh.
Hate to have Aaron sitting there twiddling his thumbs.
Right.
You know, uh, we, we, we're, we're starting fire on all cylinders, and I, I don't want to lose momentum now when we, we have some momentum going, so.
Uh, and I, I see it, I think we do have a lot, a lot of good momentum going. Yeah, I mean, I mean, we will be able to do some things within McDaniel's marketing plan, but I'd just like to supplement what they're doing, just in case.
So the sixty thousand, that's two McDaniel's, and they're allocating those dollars, or is that just a?
They are putting the ads together and then advertising, putting their, placing.
They, they are.
They are doing that, they're actively advertising as part of that.
A portion of that is their fee, but it's a hundred and fifty percent based on what the state.
Yeah, so sixty thousand of that is.
But I mean, it's under earnings to direction, they're just not.
Right, they're just not doing it unilaterally, where we have oversight there. You're actually pushing the buttons, right?
For the most part, I mean, I have some, you know, I, I hate to say I do have some concerns with McDaniel's. I think they do have like a set, um, sort of way of working things. Yeah, they've got a method and, you know, uh, uh, I've done some pushing back, but there's some pushback there as well, so, um, so, yeah, so, um, you know, it, it's nice for me to be able to exercise outside, not outside of that, but, uh, like I said, I'm pushing back, but it, it does cause a little bit more, uh, time and deliberation. By myself, a lot of times, like in the middle of, okay, how do I answer this, uh, do that sort of thing, so.
They do work for us.
No doubt.
They know that, right?
They know that, yeah.
But they want to get, uh, the contract again, I know that, so.
Yeah, no doubt.
Or a bit of feather in the cap, I think, I think it's pretty exciting to work for us, so.
So did we get, do we know where visit widget is in, in the place or AI, did we find the line item on that? I know. Or is it just not in, at, at the moment?
I think we put it in the marketing, but it's not in there.
Okay, so digital services is not it, that's something else.
Digital services is a number of other things. If you have a website, uh, videos, AMU.
Adobe Suite, so, yeah.
Got you, okay.
Creative Cloud, that sort of thing.
Correct.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's eighty-four hundred, pretty much on the nose.
For visit widget?
For visit widget, yeah, for the year.
Visit widgets and digital services.
Well, also drawing your attention to the bottom of the paper, talks about tourism tax, there's marketing there, so that's the, I think it's a fact. And on the large capital, so there's thirty thousand for the marketing, uh, that marketing plan, for grants, rack cards, and those are the main items that, that the tourism tax commission had approved.
Well, those rack cards. All right.
Good evening, not too much to talk about here. If you look at the capital item, project requests, uh, we had talked a few years about getting a truck. Whenever we were looking at a potential new subdivision, uh, that's been eliminated, and I think we could probably work something out where we receive one of the vehicles from, uh, PD, if those remain in the budget, and just eliminate that forty-five thousand. Zoning code update, um, we've had on the agenda for a couple of years, but it, it can be put off if needed. Uh, so there's not anything requested there besides those two. Uh, most of the line items have been reduced, not most, but some of them have been reduced. Some of them are, uh, remain the same. Overall, on my department, on community development, um, of that one seventy-four, bottom number, thirty-six thousand of that is a grant expense that's offset, uh, like many of the other grants in a revenue line in, uh, general administration, or general revenue.
Your salary's going down slightly too, as well, uh, babe?
Yes.
But that's only ten months running, right?
I think he's talking about the proposed.
No, proposed versus.
The proposed.
Oh.
I think versus the.
I think it's.
Budgeted.
Two or three thousand.
Yeah. You did a code update last year though, right?
No, it was in the budget last year, we did not get to it, the, uh, comprehensive plan took a little longer than we had anticipated.
Okay. Are we transferring that, you're not gonna be using those funds?
You're, you're, you're on our accounts.
So the two requests you see there aren't included in the budget at your table.
Well, I was looking, but we budgeted for forty-five thousand for last year for zoning updates, and it's not gonna get done, so I'm just wondering, doing those funds this year, and I don't know if we transferred them to something else?
They'll just carry it over to next year. Any other questions? I do want to point out, you have a bound copy of the comprehensive plan at your seat. If you want that, it is yours, if not, I will gladly take it back. It'll save us from printing any additional, uh, bound copies. And then I had sent you on email about a cop plan committee, I got one response. If anyone else is interested, please let me.
Thank you. Thanks, Ed.
All right, so now we're up to legislative administration and that. So I'm looking at the proposed large capital landings. Uh, we had thought about hiring an engineer to do some drawings and some renderings, look at what we could do to the outside of city hall, however, we pulled that out uh, due to, we look at, uh, the budget constraints. Prop S transfer, a hundred thousand, that is what we just, what we had figured we have available, so we still have that in there, uh, to transfer to the debt service for Prop S. Uh, conferences and travel, we had put in three thousand, recommending two thousand, if you want to go to, uh, um, some sort of training from MML or a conference. Um, SGTV, we have been giving them, we've been allocating thirty-nine thousand for them, however, there is a new state statute for, um, for media that is reducing the amount of income that we get from that. Uh, so it is, um, it is going down. We're looking at probably thirty-nine thousand that we will have as revenue this year instead of forty-two, and then that will continue to decrease. So based on the, uh, agreement with the, um, uh, SGTV board, they, we can allocate no less than seventy-five percent of the, uh, revenue that we pull in from that, that tax. So that puts them at twenty-nine thousand, two fifty, the rest of it pays for the electric and maintenance of the building. Uh, parkland ready, we still have that, uh, to help with economic development, that's twenty-five hundred. And then the chamber of commerce, we were talking earlier, uh, there's that six thousand dollar payment we pay five hundred monthly.
I don't know what that is.
Yep.
I don't quite understand what that is.
I mean, I figure there is some reason that the city was helping, um, helping with the chamber and whatever the, uh, whatever.
I think we use them as our economic development arm, because, uh, they field a lot of calls and, um, try to promote some economic development for, for the city and the area as a whole. So I think that was on top of our views, I think we were not in a contract, but using them as almost our.
Right.
You know, uh, so, do we get value out of that additional six thousand that we pay per year to the chamber? I guess that's up to the board to decide, but I know that they field a lot of phone calls for us and, and try to promote. Which they have to do for all members, but do we get that preferential treatment for those funds? I, I don't know. Do they, do they need it, would they change the way they represent us and, and present us as a whole? I, I don't know.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't recall what that was. That, that been.
That's been since I got here.
At one time, we funded, uh, we, we had a salary position and we helped fund that person, I forget what his name was. Um, and the county funded him, the chamber funded him, and we funded him, and he was an economic development, um, director, or I don't know what his title was, but, um, and I think when, I think he got sick or something and, and positioned away and, and, uh, we, we moved it, well, we, no, we, we, uh, not, not, we paid less, but that was, that was not what we were, we were paying a lot more than that to them, to that salary position. And this was a way to try to keep.
I don't know if we need to quibble over it, but I just don't know what that, what that would be.
Should we make an inquiry about that?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just racking my brain, cause I mean, I was on the chamber board for three years, I just don't recall ever talking about that at any point. Just confused by it.
Okay. All right, so that's legislative administration, we were looking at a new city hall AC. Our current AC is on the roof, we're gonna move it down and get a new one and put it on the ground. Uh, you know, it's, the other one works fine, it would be nice to update, but pulled that out of the budget. Municipal code review, which is separate from the zoning, cause that's the rest of the code. Uh, we're looking at updating that, that's a, a two-month process, uh, we pulled that out. Uh, we were looking at a laptop share between myself and, uh, and Sue for city treasurer work, we pulled that out. ARPA, which is a website, and, uh, stormwater is what was initially listed. There's thirty-five thousand, one hundred and eight dollars left, actually, it's gonna be a little less than that. Uh, but, uh, that will carry over because of the website, we're not gonna get it done, or get it even started probably till September. And, um, but five thousand one hundred and eight, which is actually the stormwater, um, I mean, at this point, we don't have anything else to do with stormwater, so we may want to reallocate that. Any questions about those?
Um, well, I mean, so can we reallocate that five thousand for, um, radio upgrades or, uh, other funds?
Yep, sure can. Yeah, cause we're, we're gonna be pretty close on the thirty thousand for the website, so I don't want to. We may even have some left there, but that, until we finish paying that off, I don't want to, uh, to take anything away from that, so that's thirty thousand, but.
Is that gonna be for point four or next year for twenty-five?
It's in the next budget year, it's thirty thousand for that. So there's a combination of three, there's thirty thousand for the website and five thousand one hundred and eight that's left over from stormwater.
When you say nothing left to do with stormwater, that means like the study or the engineering of it, or is that?
I mean, we don't have anywhere to go at this point. So I don't have anything else, and it's not big enough to do a project.
Yeah.
So it's just kind of, you know, five thousand left.
And that can be reallocated towards the?
It's general funds, right?
Yep. Yeah, we just have to list it, and when I, uh, do my yearly report, I just have to account for it. Okay, anything else? Moving down the page to band tax, the band fund, it's fifty-five thousand, that's what we pay just every year, that's what we allocate for them. Revenues are a little bit more than that, I think they're fifty-seven thousand. On the next page, on the backside, cemetery tax. So we have some work that we need to do out there, uh, and at the memorial cemetery. This is Cresslon Memorial that we maintain, so we need to do, uh, we have the grass cutting, that's a yearly expense for the two, um, two cemeteries, and we probably need to do some, uh, some limb cutting. So there's about four thousand and that twenty thousand that's for the limb cutting. Say that, I should say about thirty-two hundred for limb cutting. Uh, and then design expansion of plots, so in Cresslon, we are getting to the end of that section that was done, I don't know how many years ago, but we're close to getting to the end of the east side. So we're looking at pushing it further to the south, cause we have property that way. Uh, but it needs to be designed, uh, before we start expanding. Uh, had to have it engineered so that we know what, how much fill material we're gonna need, and there's also stormwater adjacent to that, we're pretty close, and that could cause some, uh, some issues.
Except that little area where we put in the little shark stream?
Yeah, yes, yeah. And then we just want to keep going further back to the south, back towards progress Parkway. Uh, let's see, uh, moving down the page, if you see debt service, we have certificates of participation, that still have a hundred and sixty-one thousand five eighty-eight left for payments. Uh, the Prop S bond, now that it passed, now proposition six, uh, six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And then for capital projects, we still have some money left over from, for cybersecurity, um, which may also be, can be reallocated to the, uh, police department for the radios. Cause we're about, we're about done with all of our updates in that.
Is that, how much does cemetery tax, I mean, it's a dedicated fund, so it's not, um.
Forty thousand a year?
Roughly forty thousand, okay.
All right, so it's, that's what the budgeted for next year, that's.
Yeah.
Anticipated revenue?
Yep. We got a, we do have a, if, if you look on the, the big spreadsheet, we do have a reserve left in that, about two hundred and thirty thousand.
After, uh, your proposed, yeah.
Yeah, with those, it'll, it'll eat into that sum, but you're also looking at what's budgeted for the year, we're, we're pretty, pretty good. for the year, we're, we're pretty, pretty good. And the improvement will probably dig into that pretty heftily. We have, we had it looked at as a larger piece going all the way to the property line towards Progress Parkway, and the estimate was about 235,000 to do the fill. Because part of it is you have to get dirt, you can't put other fill materials in there, it has to be dirt. So finding the dirt, having it trucked in, it's just a lot of labor. And then compacting it, because you're eventually gonna be digging into it.
I don't know what the, what the proposed, Proposition S, the, the improvement out there on Progress Parkway, I don't know if that's gonna be a balanced site or not, but there might be quite a bit of fill material that might come out of there. So might be something that we, I mean, it's a short haul from there to there, so that might be something that we could really work in with any developer to bring some of that over.
So the way this may work is we'll be designing it and then at the same time dropping dirt off to fill it, start filling it and then go back with figuring out to compact it, level it, and get it set.
Maybe we could get like a corporate sponsor for our cemetery and we could-
Salin?
Yeah.
Pretty great.
Oh my gosh. And at the bottom of the page, you'll notice what, where we also have seen our increases, these are some of our big budget, bigger budgeted items that I thought we've kept in there and let you know what the, what the changes are in those expenditures. Any questions?
How long, what's our length of contract with our IT management?
I think we have three years left.
So how do we, or don't they have a minimum that they can raise on that thing? We're talking about, uh-
Forward slash.
Forward slash.
Forward slash. We have a 12% increase for them.
This is, what, you're not looking at 12% increase for them, it was, it's a 2% or 3% increase, it's the increase in what we have added for cybersecurity.
Machines and other computers and-
Equipment, again, the software and the renewals, so that's what you're seeing now, because we do, we do the testing that nobody takes the test for, we do the-
I'd take my test.
Had to bring that.
We have the renewals for, because we do with Bit Defender, Barracuda is our backup, so we have these, the renewal amounts that are also included, oh, Microsoft Office. And everybody's got an email, and then in the office, it's actual, you know, full Microsoft Office.
This is the amount, this isn't the total services, this is the increase that like on IT, it's an 86,000 dollar increase, or that's the total?
That's the total. It's paid by, by three departments, because it's paid for by three departments, it's a general fund, water and sewer. So my plan is to, if you want to make some decisions tonight, you want to make some hard and fast, or if you don't want to, next meeting we'll have a budget allocated in the work session, so that's next Thursday. You can take a week to think about this, we don't want things to be forgotten between now and then. We can also start incorporating some of this if you want us to do that, and then bring that back next Thursday.
I don't know if I missed it, obviously, was there any employee raise figured into this?
So no COLA, right?
Right, so we have a step increase, but no COLA.
Yes, for the year.
We were looking at, I think overall, 3%, so with the step raise, it's about 1%, we were gonna do a 2% COLA, that's about 33,000 total, that would add to the budget. So we, we pulled it out, again, trying to keep it down.
And then Officer Steiger mentioned tourism's budgets. No, no, I'm sorry, it was, was it tourism's budget that you said decreased?
Uh, looks like it.
Yeah, yeah, year to year.
I think Dave's budget went down too.
Looks like Dave's budget went down, actually the police departments went down 50 something thousand dollars with the increase for dispatch, I mean, that's, I mean, a considerable cut.
The grant of 90,000, I hear, 40,000. I know Jason joins, but that's part of some of that.
Like I said, I mean, he, he got the dispatch hike, and it looks like he's still 50,000 underwears left here.
Yeah, because we had, I don't remember what the, what the grants were last year. Anticipated grants, which we also have some anticipated grants this year as well.
So we're still, I, I don't know if we found, was it roughly 290,000 to get to that 50%?
355 is what we have to, we did not get to that number now.
So what's the, the general fund balance surplus in red, it's two, that's the 294, what's?
So that's how much you're eating into what would be your total, total leftover. So your, your, your department total-
If we left the budget as is, including where you're at with the recommended, or 290, 294 total?
Right. Well, the 294 is, is, is a deficit that comes out, so 1,031 is what your, what the total is, and 40% of, that is 40% of 2628 over on the left. So of the revenue that we have, that amount is 40% of the 2, 2,628, because we have to have at least 50% that, that we allocate for that.
As we said today.
Yeah.
That's state statute or that's our policy?
It's our policy.
Visually smart.
So that means you'll have six months of, that you could, that you can, let me take that back, it's 40% of the 2550, not the 2628, but the 2550, under the operational, right above the green, that's the total run the city. So if we don't have any income, something happened, something, a disaster, obviously, we don't have any income, and we can, we can support the city and its operations for six months.
Happy there is no state statute regarding that, is that we have to be, have extra dollars that have been reserved to fund the city, if that's what's odd.
Nope.
There's so many things, but they don't.
Yeah.
So I know we're speaking to the bigger issue right now, the difference in 40%, 50%, are we ready, would you entertain an option to pull some funds from, from some of these line items on the capital page and, and fund certain items like, if we're ready for it, I'd like to propose that we pull money out of that ARPA website storm line item, and then the cybersecurity to fully fund the radios for PE. It's on the backside, all the way to the bottom.
Backside on the capital projects.
And that, I mean, that's more money than you need for that rate, isn't it?
That's 11,000?
11,000, right. Not that I want to sidestep the bigger issue of getting, taking 40% to 50% or, or writing a bill to put an ordinance in place, but-
Yeah, it's doable.
So you had that, you also have the part-time fire chief.
Well, that's not even, that would be in addition to, if we funded that back in.
Correct.
Yeah.
Those are the notes that I've made.
Excel didn't do 32,000 worth of rounding in that 40% cell, did it?
Yeah, so if you had that, and had that amount, and it probably goes down about 37, 38.
Yeah.
Do we anticipate being affected by the sales tax snafu that's been discussed with the county and?
We were not, we were not part of that state statute, it didn't list cities, it didn't list counties, so it doesn't affect us at all. Yeah, we are not affected by that, we are just, this is the point that we are with our reserves, I mean, eaten into those with some, with some, some of the projects, and again, the new yearly costs that we are incurring everywhere.
So if, I mean, our option is do nothing, go with the proposed, make more cuts, try to cut that, the two options, I guess, but-
Well, you can move money from capital projects back in and just cover that, but-
I mean, at what percentage do we anticipate getting rooftops and getting some tax revenue from the new subdivision? I mean, if, if we mandated this, if we pulled the money from capital improvements, I mean, you certainly don't want this to be a downward spiral continuing year over year.
At least two.
You're two years away at least. I mean, you'll have some sales tax, you know, generation from construction and, you know, so you, you know, we're doing five or 10 streets, you know, you're gonna have some crews in here and, you know, some home construction, but you know, so you'd have to borrow some sales, but property taxes, you're not gonna see any for a lot.
I just, again, just looking at this from a, you know, we see a projection that it's gonna continue to, to decrease year over year, you know, if we have some outlook that that maybe it will, might be a client to hold some of that capital.
You're talking about the 32,000? If you knew there was a get, a get well date-
Right.
-on the horizon?
32,000.
Uh, the fire time, part-time fire chief. Fire chief.
No, he's talking about if we want to pull 255,000.
Oh, okay.
You're not changing an ordinance.
Okay.
Or you can change the ordinance and we can work within that, that measure of, of reserves, but if you want, that's, that means we're digging into reserves.
Right. What's your recommendation? I mean, how did you-
Yeah, recommendation is, I would recommend amending the, the minimum that we have to, that we have to keep for the reserve. I think that's, it's not the simplest, I mean, we can transfer money pretty easily, but I also agree that I don't want it sitting there and then get, you know, we start using it because it's sitting there.
Right.
But, I mean, so when I started, we, we had 650,000 in our reserve extra that we've now moved over, and that's what's kind of-
Would it set a bad precedent to change that ordinance to allow the 40%? And change it back to 50% when we're in better standing, I mean, that seems to wish you want, even though-
Yeah, but that's, that's the option, yeah.
We didn't actually have an ordinance in place when we said it at 50, did we?
No, that was a recommendation the board was 50. And again, I will say this, and I don't have a list of cities, but it runs anywhere from 25 to 50%. Some cities don't want that much reserve in there, they don't-
Higher percentage of it, but at the same time, much like many budgets before this, like there's not a whole lot of fat in here to cut, I mean, without losing services.
Yeah.
And at least we're in a position where we have some reserves, but I'm certainly not proposing depleting those, but if, if we have, we do have, quite at the end zone, I think, with, with this tax passing and with the possibility of adding all of the rooftops and like usually the sales tax that will generate that.
Well, and if you look at the, if, if at some point the sales tax for dispatch, they don't need us to build the reserves, there's almost 200,000 at that point that is back in our budget.
The board could also take the stance that they don't want to pay that into that, because I mean, we did not agree to pay the highest.
And this has always been a bone of contention, we don't really have any negotiating rights in our dispatch situation. San Jose County does all the negotiation, I don't think that, I mean, I think we'd be cutting off on it, it's right in face to, to look elsewhere and attach for-
Well, I'm not even saying, but what they're asking for is a payment into the initial infrastructure.
Right.
So the side even-
The way the system has been in, in its entirety is we are at the whim of, of counting, and we've never had, when they moved to St. Francis County, we didn't have any voice on that.
We just had to grant a fair-
No voice on that. We just have to pay what they tell us to pay. I don't know at what point in time, and this is not a decision for me, I mean, it's certainly suited for those that are more affected by it, but we, we don't have any, any dog in that fight, even though it affects us every day.
Well, don't, won't we have, you know, upcoming board members that we can vote for and have a say on, on that board going, going forward?
Going forward.
Yeah.
Because we've got one voice on there now, right?
We do have representation on the board.
Yeah, we got Paul.
Yeah.
But we didn't have to join, go to St. Francis, we could have went out on our own and did our own thing, I guess, right?
We could have.
Right, would have been dumb.
Would have been dumb, yeah. And, I mean, at some point in time, I would think we'd need to weigh the options of, of looking at our own dispatch versus what we're paying for that, if it's gonna continue to go up, and I know that it may not, like, well, that, like, once this infrastructure is done, will it come back down? I mean, we're old.
I mean, that's supposed to be eliminated.
Yes.
It's supposed to all be paid for.
But it still went up a decent percentage every year.
Well, that was part of our, well, I think they only came, they only asked, what, was it 120 last year?
Yep.
So, I mean, they only asked for that last year, they haven't made an ask.
60,000.
Well, they wanted 120,000 commitment for-
No, they want 180, 880, whatever it is, 86,000 is the commitment, because it's per month.
That's the new ask.
That's the ask, yeah, that's, that's the contract we signed.
Just for one year, they really wanted us to do three or five years?
Well, they wanted us to continue making the, yeah.
Additional payment.
And just kind of, but at that time, we were voting to do it for three to five years or whatever they were asking, they wanted a long-term commitment, and we said, no, we take it year by year.
Yeah.
To my understanding, they're generating more than they had anticipated, and they don't think it's gonna be anywhere near the five years that they had thought, but I, I don't know if the city needs to get more involved in their board meetings to find out exactly where they're at financially, how would we get off of that, or at least reduce our amount if they're willing to do that.
Well, I think if, if I recall, I mean, I don't know where, where it comes in, I mean, I know we obviously have to pay some into it, but their, their ask last year was to continue paying what we had more or less obligated to pay previously to help fund the initial infrastructure cost, but that they said that that would sunset at some point, but we, but they couldn't tell us when because they didn't know what tax revenues would be like.
So they had anticipated five years, well, I don't think they were.
But there's, there's nothing saying that we have to pay for the infrastructure costs, I guess is mine.
Not after this year.
Right. Well, did we vote on?
Well, we voted for this year.
That came in-
Current year.
I, I mean, I think that request came in after our budget, right? Last year? Came in October, November, probably, or would have, it would have been after November election.
I think it was, we were, we were at Plaza, so I think it was January.
January, because it would have been after the November election when it, when it passed.
Yep.
But we're generating a lot of the sales tax for that proposition, that was passed, I guess, and I think Alderman Donovan brought it up at the time, it felt double, right, double taxed in a way.
And it probably wouldn't be a question of much for what if it was a 70,000 dollar increase?
Correct.
Right.
It would be nice to get an update from them, trying, maybe we could-
We had one of them, I'm gonna-
Major shots are, are contact, I'll let him know.
If you want to pound the flesh room, or- If you want to pound the flesh room or.
I will bring an e-mail.
Well, and he would be coming before the board anyway if he wants to bring the next contract request.
Right, yeah. Get your chance, Adam.
The, the, the board itself, the, the situation itself and how it was presented initially, like, I just feel like we've always been handed that without any real recourse or negotiation ability. And, I mean, while we're talking numbers, I, I would think that it I would be in favor of, of approving the COLA for the employees on top of the one percent. I mean, their costs are still going up at the grocery store and the gas pump, just like everybody else's, so. I mean, in the grand scheme of things, that's not all that much more than we're arguing in the whole, maybe that's the wrong way to look at it, but.
Can we use any of these ARPA funds, like the restroom ones, to do any of these projects or shortfalls? Is there, I, I don't know what the, I don't know what the limits are. I'm not familiar with the ARPA funds and what we can and can't do with those.
So it wouldn't work for salaries. That's not the way it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be for extra, extra funds, for extra payments to employees as they stayed through the COVID, uh, COVID mess that we had. And again, yeah, we can reallocate. I can look again at our list of what was the recommended items. Most of them was, were for infrastructure, water, sewer. Uh, we did, we used it for streets. There's a few other things I can look at and see if they would apply. But if you're looking at something that's on our current, the, what we're currently using, we can't use it for advertising, so it wouldn't be for, you know, we wouldn't be able to use it for tourism. But if you're looking to see if I can apply it to something else that's in here, and, you know, park board may have, you know, some disagreement with that, but it's up to the board to make that allocation.
Why, slightly off topic, maybe not, why, why do you think the use tax went up so significantly from twenty-two to twenty-three and then twenty-four?
And you will not see that again. We, we worried about that ourselves is why that there was that large of an increase. Uh, there were some purchases made by a local company. Uh, we don't know what company that is, that, that, the state won't give you that information. But we had them check it and they had made some large purchases that were use tax allocable, or, or for use tax allocation, uh, and that's why it went up. Otherwise, we don't see those every year. Yeah, so that will, it'll come back down to more normal levels, but, uh, and you kind of see where those levels are in the past years.
Those, uh, use taxes go into general costs?
Yeah.
I know that we talked about that, will be a lawsuit a while back. Is the city entitled any of the collection of that if, if the county got in on that?
We are, but it would have to be allocated for certain, um,
Project?
Certain, yeah, it has to do something with either education or rehabilitation, something along those lines. I have not been approached. I haven't seen anything, haven't heard anything.
Nothing at all. Why did anything that our fans or anything?
It's just thinking of offsetting in our budget. It's budgeted toward dividing its.
I, and I don't, if we weren't part of those lawsuits, I haven't seen anything where we're a part of that, where we would be getting payments.
The same guy, I think it counts if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
I know, like, in St. Francis County, the county controls it all and there's like a grant-type process that you can apply for.
Yeah, but I know, when I was in Harrisonville, we actually became part of a, of a class action lawsuit on that, so I don't, I don't know if the county would allocate funds to help it, that or not. So is the general feeling that you want us to put back in the two percent COLA raise?
I don't like to see it back in.
Because you, it, it does include right now a, a one percent step?
Yeah.
Without that, if you did the two percent COLA, you said that was another thirty-three thousand?
Yes.
Certainly hate to stomp on that, but again, to Bob's earlier point, we, we do have a fire department of volunteers that we should think about doing something for.
So we did something last year for the volunteers, increasing the allocation for their, um, their yearly stipend that they get from the city. Um, and then also for those employees that are paid, um, that are paid monthly because of the work they do down there.
Right.
Also got an increase.
Yeah, no, no good answer to that.
Yeah, I mean, we also gave the, the police the take-home cars too. That was, that was enacted in this budget year. I don't know if we can quantify that cost. I mean, we probably could get close, but.
We're looking at that, since we haven't had a full year yet, to see what those costs are. But we've anticipated about a, about a ten thousand dollar increase.
Nothing crazy, but.
No. No, but it adds up, it's just one of the other.
And that's within thirty mile. Hit our officers, do that.
Do what?
The thirty mile thing, all of them.
But within the thirty miles?
Right.
Correct.
But there are other employees outside of each department.
Should just take them parts all the city dollars.
Oh, gosh. Don't you walk to work? We'll put a shoe diaper in there.
Bike is sitting outside and then parking on that.
Get you an e-bike.
Oh, that's.
There you go.
Oh, wow, I can't eat that.
I don't think I'm allowed to make money.
Maybe the ARPA funds can pay for that.
Hey, that's a thought.
If we get a tourism department golf cart.
Interesting.
I have one you can use.
Yeah.
If you don't come back next year with a golf court request, I'm gonna be upset.
We got one. We got one.
Oh, okay, there you go.
Police departments.
I sort of said, use it, it needs rain.
Doesn't have red and blue lights on it, does it?
It does. Absolutely, because as long as, he's gonna be the gatekeeper of it now.
Be the bank.
Part of your budget.
I mean, if we, we add in the COLA, if we add in.
It's gonna change that percentage down.
So change some funds at the fire department. We, um, plus the other ones, it's not gonna be at forty percent anymore. It's gonna be in the thirty percent, thirty-two percent, thirty-three percent. So we need to. I mean, it's one thing going from fifty to forty, but fifty to thirty. Um, you would think that there's light at the end of the tunnel in two or three or four years, but till we get here. Nobody has that crystal ball.
Yeah, we hope we see increases in tax revenue as well, but it's, it's slow.
Is there some impact to credit ratings or anything with, with that change?
Well, as long as we have something adopted, that's what they want to look at. Make sure that you're, they're trying to keep a reserve in there. Again, that's, and, and these are cities that also have good credit ratings, so they may be twenty-five percent, thirty percent, yeah.
You know of cities with a bigger budget than ours that are at a, a twenty-five percent?
I think a lot of your, a lot more of your larger cities, you know, you're talking some multimillions, multi-hundreds of millions.
Yeah, easier to move a needle.
Could we move over from the capital funds to cover those, the, the huge salary and the the COLA and still do the thirty or the forty percent organs?
What I don't want to do is use that for salaries. We could cover, yes, as long as that's the intention. I don't want to move it over because we're trying to make payments in that case.
No.
Uh, because I don't think that's good use of, of those funds. Okay, all right. But, yeah, we could, we could, I can do a combination of stuff, you know?
In, uh, in legislative, um, there's a line for economic development services. Is that, is that the chamber?
Or, we used to pay out of that. We don't do any more. Or is that in, is that in the legislative?
Yes.
Okay, so that pays for chamber, Parkland Ready.
Sim, SEMO?
Yeah, SEMO RPC.
Why do we have so much money in there?
Have what?
Why do we have so much money in there?
How much is it?
Eighteen thousand eight hundred.
Six was chamber, twenty-five was SEMO.
There's two, there's two, the two-chamber, is there regular dues and then?
Um, the regular dues comes out of like number shows.
Is that Parkland R E D I factor into that?
Yes.
Twenty-five hundred.
There's a reason for that, because I'm, I know we were doing the, um, those three items. There was something else. I don't have it written down.
Is there a, um, is there a total cost that we pay to the courthouse, to the assessor and, and the for the fees that we pay them?
It depends on what you, what you, uh, what kind of tax total that you have. It's a percentage based on that.
And that rate is set by?
I don't, I think it's state statute what they can, I'm not mistaken. We can look that up, but I think it's.
Can, can you do some research on?
We need some research, yeah.
Pay and what's allowed and where we're at? Maybe we can negotiate with county or fees that they're charging us.
They can also say they don't want to do it anymore and then we have other recourses that we have to start doing it.
Sure. Maybe it'd be cheaper for us to do it. Bring it back in-house. I don't know. Doubt it, but.
Angry mob is attempting to place a campaign.
It's very convenient, but.
We have to add on the city hall for another office for them.
Aaron's not, not being able to get to work, so we'll just use Aaron's office to.
Get an office and then kick you out. I wonder if economic development, we, we included, um, the, um, I don't know if it's a widget, but, um, placere AI, what if we put that in there?
Mine notes don't.
My notes only have the chamber, so.
That's what mine, isn't that what you said might show?
Yeah, mine is, also includes for chamber, so I'm thinking, I'm wondering if that's where we put the placere AI. Because that was, that was the idea, was that it would be for economic development.
What was placere AI, eight thousand? Five?
Five thousand. Yeah, I bet that's where it is.
We just changed our, we just got an increase in our, um, city attorney fees. There's legal services, um, in judicial expense and judicial.
Yeah.
Um, historically, we haven't been spending that whole, we, we, we budgeted twenty-five last year and we budgeted twenty-five this year. We're only at seventeen thousand this year. We use nineteen and twenty-three and twenty and twenty-two. There's, it's a very small amount, but, I mean, there're five thousand dollars there. We could pull out of legal services under judicial.
Yeah, we can pull it out of that.
That's general, right?
Yep.
Judicial?
Yep.
Good.
Um, you had talked, um, earlier that you might, um, and I'm glad the paper left, so I don't get too much of you mad.
Remember, you're still live on TV.
Yeah, you didn't, um, speak about Special Road District. Have we had any conversation with, is there any partnership coming up this year on?
Yeah, so Special Road is looking at, uh, paving Creek. Creek Road, Creek and Wilder is what we have in the city, so they want to do twenty-five thousand dollars worth of extra that they'll do inside city limits. I'm not sure what that, uh, what that amount is going to actually entail, where it's gonna be from point to point, but, uh, Special Road District is talking about doing that.
No way it's probably too creative or bad.
No, because if we want to take it all the way up to, um, build more, which is what we want to do with that road, that would probably require that we have, we expend money for that because we won't have things. Because they want to do it this fall. We're not gonna have anything ready to go for, uh, for Prop S at that point.
So just gonna be, whatever they're gonna do is probably just an overlay then?
I would imagine.
All right, so just to, do we want to try to wrap this up tonight formally? Make a decision or are you wanting some time to think?
I made my couple of recommendations.
Same here. So, what we can do is bring back a budget next Thursday that has some of these recommendations included in there. You'll see what the bottom line is, see where we are financially. Make some changes after that. So, we have a five Thursday month. We can have an extra meeting before Memorial Day, or we wait until September and you could meet the first week of September if we have any changes that need to be made. You want to approve them before we start reading. It's either that or we meet on the first Thursday, I'm sorry, not the first Thursday, the first, a regular meeting on second Thursday. And we go over those numbers and approve that. And then at the next meeting, you'd have to read it twice because it has to be adopted before October 1st. And we have it in the past.
Read it twice and it's looked a joke.
Well, I mean, we're gonna have five meetings and we're doing all of it. It's plenty of time for input on.
So, you're saying if we, we came back after next week's meeting and made a decision, then we would have to?
29th is the next Thursday. So, it would be, September 12th would be the first meeting in September. That's when you'd want to have your first reading.
So, you could do a first reading on the 12th and a second reading on the 26th and be done?
Yeah.
Assuming we were good after next week's meeting, correct?
Yes.
And that would not take a separate meeting in between the two?
If we finalize it at the next meeting and we finalize how we want to approach that. If we transfer money over, we're gonna also pass an ordinance, we do multiple things. Then, yeah, then we can, well, the two meetings, two regular meetings in September, we won't have to meet any extra.
Is everybody good with that tentative timeline?
Say it again?
Okay, so the idea would be Happy's gonna make revisions based on the discussion tonight. Bring back an updated proposal. And we can take a look at it in a work session at next week's meeting, the 22nd of August. Assuming we come to an agreement there, then we could have a first reading on the 12th and a second reading on the 26th of September.
And then if we have to have a special one in between there, we can. I don't know what Happy's gonna bring back in a week, one more short 300. I mean, are we gonna change the ordinance?
Well, I think it's trending towards that.
I think it's a combination, as Alderman Bennett pointed out. It's like, you might want to transfer some money back over from capital projects and reduce that, the requirement of 50%.
Because we're gonna be 32% if we don't change the ordinance and bring some money back over.
Yeah.
Are you gonna, well, you have two proposals then with the COLA raise?
Tell me what you want. Otherwise, all I was gonna bring back is just COLA raise. If you want something without that, if you want to compare the two.
Just the COLA raise and then the revisions, just the minor revisions we made? Did, I mean.
Was that that COLA raise and the part-time chief?
Can you just recap the highlights of?
Yeah.
So, we're gonna reallocate money from ARPA that's in the, in the administration fund. We're gonna reallocate that to radios. We're gonna have Jason come and talk to us about dispatch fees, see if ARPA can be used for blah, blah, blah. Okay, opioid.
Are we gonna fully fund the radios? Hold on, we're gonna fully fund the radios? That's what I, that's what I had thought.
I'm trying to get this week to see if dispatch is still on track for a switch over.
Okay.
In January, if they're not, if it's gonna be pushed back another year, we can push that back.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. Yeah, because there was 5,100 going from the ARPA down to that. And I think, we also 6,000 from cybersecurity, right? Okay, so fully fund the rates, just to clarify.
So, then part-time fire chief at 32,000 and then the 3% raise, or not, I'm sorry, 2% total raise.
I think that's probably good. I would come back to this new paid position for the fire chief. That 32,000 comes with X amount of hours, I guess, and however we structure that position.
Talk about that.
Yeah, I know you guys, that was before my assignment.
Absolutely.
About 30 hours a week.
Yeah.
If I can, whenever I question that, I'm looking at the average fire chief for a small community makes about 50,000 for a full-time position. I was looking at doing 24 hours a week for half of, my tech of the hours for half of the day was what I was proposing, not 24 hours, but the 30.
I would ask the board to maybe entertain, maybe a slightly smaller number for that position and maybe less hours. And then take maybe 6,000 or 8,000 of that, maybe fund the fire chief at 24,000 and then give 8,000 to the tourism department for some additional marketing. We're still the same numbers, but maybe just not put as much hours in the fire chief position. Maybe somewhere like 24,000 for the part-time chief position and maybe not fully halftime, 24 hours, maybe 18 hours where he would be able to, or chief. Would be something like that.
Happy, I've got one question, how this flows through? You know, if we allocated under the water and sewer department, both major expenditures for motor vehicle, I think the sewer was 175. Isn't that for the VAC truck?
That is for the VAC truck, yes.
Yeah, but we have nothing for 2025 proposed. That truck's gonna come in.
Truck is expected to come in September 6th.
Yeah. Push your fingers.
So, if it comes in, right?
It'll be reallocated, not to reallocate it to the next budget year. For both, for both of those, because it's, half of us coming out of water, half of us out of sewer.
Those are the dedicated funds anyway, though we can't really move too.
All right, thank you, Happy.
Thank you all. This wasn't easy. I'm sorry to bring this type of budget to you, but.
The question is how do we get revenues up? You know, it's tough to cut, the question is how do we generate more revenue?
We just have to watch the budget a little better this year, a little tighter.
All right, thanks, thanks to Happy for putting all this together and super.
Also the department heads that put time in.
Thanks, everybody, for being here and.
Always a fun time of the year.
With that, we will adjourn.